Good, good afternoon. I'm gonna call the study session to order. City Clerk will call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
First item of business is clarification for items on the consent calendar. We'll start with Mr. Sellers tonight.
I have none.
Mr. Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Prochin, hand?
Yes, I have two questions. On council item number five, having to do with the purchase of junior lifeguard equipment, I noted that it was decided not to bid that contract this time around. And I'm just a little curious, it didn't seem to be a fulsome explanation of why we chose not to do that this year. And so, maybe somebody can help enlighten me on that. And then I have one other item.
Mayor, council. We were working under, subjectively, under some time constraints with the retirement of Reenie Boyer. Then subsequently, we moved in one of our battalion chiefs to take over. And so, as we looked at the timeframe we had to work in, we were gonna move ahead as we normally would. But at that point, we contacted Hurley and asked them if they would take a look at giving us the same price that they gave us the year before, which we figured they would balk at. But they said they actually would consider that. And so, we then went and looked to see if we could just amend the contract, our 2009 contract, to just roll that over into 2010, keeping it at the same price we had.
Do you recollect the spread of bids last time around when we did bid it out? I know there were three bidders. What was the spread of bids? Was Vulcan, it's Vulcan, right?
The actually, the one that got it was Hurley.
Hurley.
And then we actually had HIC.
I get those confused.
And Toes on the Nose was in there. And I would, I'm not, 189 and 209.
So, Hurley was quite a bit lower than the next lowest bidder last year around?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, it made it very easy for us. And so, we asked if they would keep it at the same price, and they said that they actually would.
And, but maybe next year, we'll be able to organize things to rebid it, do you suppose?
We'll probably bring, we probably won't try to go a third year on it. We'll go back out and see what the marketplace is doing.
Okay, thanks Chief. With regard to item number six, I think this is a good thing to do. I don't have any problem with the project here to redo some landscaping in West Newport. But I was curious why the funding for that came out of the general fund as opposed to the oceanfront encroachment fund, which I would have thought would be a likely spot for that kind of work to be funded. Steve, if you know, or if somebody can help me understand that.
Well, I don't know exact reason, but I'm speculating that the policy requires it to benefit the beach-going public. So, I guess you could say that new landscaping in that park could work, so maybe we should explore that. I'll have to do some research on it, though, to find out why we went that route.
The people that park in those parking lots, I can tell you, are surfers, for the most part. So, I think they're beach-going public, but I don't know, Steve, maybe you've got.
Quite honestly, I don't know. I don't know why it's coming out of one fund or the other. I mean, the project, I requested the project about a year ago, so, I mean, but I didn't specify where the funding was to come from.
The only reason I raise the issue is I'm a little sensitive about using general fund money these days. And if we have a fund that is dedicated for a use like that, let's use that fund, because that's why we've got.
We'll take a look at that. It's a good suggestion, thank you.
Councilmember Daigle?
I have none.
Councilmember Gardner?
I have none.
And I have none. The next item is a recommendation from the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee regarding regulation of leaf blowers in residential areas. Mr. City Manager?
I hear Sharon back there. Sharon Wood will make the presentation here. I think she's questioning her status here.
I'm also late, I'm sorry. Because I'm coming from another meeting. Does somebody have a full staff report? These consultants, I tell you, the quality goes way down. Thank you.
Boy, how quickly they forget, you know? Jeez.
I was so busy on my special projects. Well, the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee spent quite a bit of time on this. They had a subcommittee who did research. They expanded the subcommittee, they expanded the research. They talked about it at probably two or three meetings, tabled it for a while, and then decided to bring it back because members were still hearing comments from residents. So, at their meeting of October 19th, they made a recommendation to the city council, and the steps that they're recommending are outlined in the staff report. And they include doing outreach activity to quantify the perceived economic impacts. For instance, increased labor costs on the affected residential property owners. And by the way, they are talking about regulations of leaf blowers only in residential areas, not commercial areas. And also, to conduct outreach to determine community reactions to it. And then, with that information, decide whether the city should institute a complete ban, a limited ban, or some more restrictive standards than we have today. And when staff looked at this recommendation, and we're looking at it after the city council's priority-setting session, when you established the priority that the city council should look at the economic impacts of proposed new regulations. And so, that's really in keeping with what EQUAC recommended. And so, staff thought that that is probably something that should be done before any regulations are adopted. If the council would like staff to go forward with that, it would be helpful to have some idea of what level of restriction the council is talking about, so that the study can be more meaningful. But the sad news is that we haven't been able to identify any staff people who could work on this at this time. The most likely department would be General Services, and they're one of the departments that has really had a reduction in staff as part of the early retirement program. So, probably it would involve having to retain a consultant to do that kind of a study.
Questions? Mayor Prochin, hand?
Sharon, do you have any feeling, let's presume, and I realize I'm not speaking for the full council here, but let's presume that it is limited to residential only, and that we want to do enough outreach to determine whether there is a, in fact, a strong public feeling about this. And that we want to do just enough to see if there's a real issue on the cost associated with it to homeowners, to make a switch to ban these leaf blowers, which I would presume would be contacting some residential landscape maintenance companies and see what their point of view is. Do you have any feeling for how much expense it would be for an outside resource?
Not really. Maybe City Manager has a thought on that. I'm just guessing, I would think that it would be something under $10,000, if it's really limited. And, you know, and then there's, then there's the issue of, if the council decides to go forward, then we're also looking at more staff time to draft the regulations, time from the city attorney's office, and then staff to enforce them once they are adopted.
Well, if the regulation turns out to be to ban the use of leaf blowers, that's, I presume that doesn't take a great deal of drafting effort from an ordinance standpoint.
Not as much as tinkering with something more of a common.
Yeah. I would have to say, just from my perspective, and then I'll stop. I've gotten more emails on this subject than practically any other subject that's come along recently, and from constituents, and running at least 10 to 1 in favor of some sort of restriction. And I know the Corona Del Mar Residents Association has been really kind of pointing this issue. But really, my emails have come from constituents in my district, more so than the Corona Del Mar Residents Association. So, I guess what I'm looking for is a pathway here that perhaps, if the resident associations, two or three of them feel all that strongly about it, maybe they would want to put a little financial muscle behind moving it along, if we do have a staff problem. So, anyway, I'll stop.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I think it's probably difficult to find the high ground to defend something as noisy as a leaf blower. But I think the economic impact is definitely something that needs to be considered. And, you know, if that technology is no longer available, what people are gonna do, and what the costs and the time are involved with it, as well as any aesthetic impact, I think a lot of residents really like a tidy-looking driveway and environment. So, those are all considerations. But if there is any outreach that's done, I think what has to be considered is not only an outright ban, but some limitation, which I think is maybe a place that might be more reasonable. And then also, those would be my comments. And we did do some outreach. The previous city manager put it in his newsletter, and he said he got a couple of emails. It was not something that triggered outcry in either direction from the, at least the people that get the newsletter.
Councilmember Gardner?
As far as, as sort of a half measure, it's very difficult. We had a number of meetings, as I say, at EQUAC, and some of the research that was done suggested that the easiest thing to do is ban them. If you do anything in the middle, it causes more problems than trying to somehow administer it. Palo Alto did it by sound decibels, and it was a nightmare. I mean, were you gonna run and have somebody running around all the time with a meter or something? I know that Mark Harmon was telling me that in Claremont, they did electric, but people didn't want them plugging in, so they got the cheapest generators. And so, the noise was just as bad, and so was the pollution. So, the middle ground doesn't seem to be very likely in terms of saving money. That's, I think, the middle ground for EQUAC was, well, we'll keep it residential. That means that the big properties that need a lot of muscle will be able to continue to use some kind of machinery. And the other nice thing about keeping it that way is that you can go to a commercial entity and say, "Look, your blowers and things are too loud, and you're only dealing with one or two," as opposed to trying to deal with a bunch of residents and saying, "I'm calling. My neighbor's gardener is too loud and causing more problems." I did disagree, though, a bit with the amount of outreach that would be necessary. I mean, we've done outreach, we've had meetings, we're having a study session on the subject. We'll hear from the public. I don't know quite how much we would do. We could have another study session, I suppose. If we came up with a solution that we wanted to propose, we could then have another study session on that proposed program. But why we would continue to go, I don't know, I mean, we're gonna take a poll or something like that, and spend money on something like that, when we have a regular way of doing things to get public input, I don't know that we need to do that. As far as labor costs, I think we could probably talk to Laguna Beach and find out from them. As far as, I think, was it Mike that suggested, the Residents Association or others, I can say for sure that members of EQUAC, if we ask them to, will be glad to do additional research. It's just, will staff be comfortable with their research, or feel like it's being shaded or something? But there's no question that they've already done outreach to other cities, and would continue to do that if we feel that there's more necessary. Particularly, if we could have staff, for example, suggest the questions asked. Here, this is what we need to know to evaluate it. Then, if we don't have the necessary number of people, we could have EQUAC or the Residents Association or someone help us out with that. That may be the wave of the future with the limited budgets for the time being.
Mr. Rosansky?
Well, at the risk of taking a contrary view to this thing, I only got four or five emails on this thing. And apparently, there's been a lot of outreach, or a lot of buzz in the community about it. I would have expected a lot more, myself. You know, we're in a time where we're cutting back, we're losing employees, you know, we're talking about further cutbacks. So, to spend money on consultants for something like this, I mean, this is a, to me, it's a want, it's not a need. And I think going forward this year, we need to focus on the needs, not the wants. And, I don't know, I just, I think there's a lot more than just leaf blowers. I think the people, they use the motorized edgers, they use the lawnmower. I mean, there's a lot of noise associated with gardening. I don't think that's gonna go away by banning leaf blowers. So, you know, if we come up with some staff time to look into this issue, and maybe get some more information, I guess I could support that. But I really don't, I wouldn't want to spend a lot of time on it, not right at this point in time.
Councilmember Webb?
I think that one of the things that I would be somewhat concerned about, or I think needs to be determined before we go too far forward, is we need to talk to some of the small gardeners to find out how much more they're gonna charge if they can't use a leaf blower. Because I have watched ours, the leaf blowers, I think, speed up their process. And I can imagine it taking maybe another 20 or 30 minutes, which is almost double the amount of time they spend there, to sweep or to use another process. So, I would, if I were a gardener, and I couldn't use a leaf blower, I would probably end up substantially increasing my fees within the city. And so, I think that some way or another, we need to have some input from, on how much more it's gonna cost. And that needs to be a factor in determining whether or not we go forward.
Mr. Sellers?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I tend to agree with Councilmember Rosansky on his comments. Like Councilman Webb said, I'd want to see some information on the gardeners, and what it's gonna do to the cost they charge. I'm also concerned about the enforcement of it. I don't know if some of the cities you looked at, whether, I agree with Councilmember Gardner that either you ban them or you don't, you don't try and go halfway in between. But once you ban them, what kind of problems do you run into enforcing it? Is it something that just, after six months or a year, everyone gets used to, and there's not a lot of enforcement involved, or it's something that it's a continual enforcement problem? Again, as Councilmember Rosansky mentioned, we're in tight budget times, and to be putting more enforcement burdens on our staff, if that's in fact what this does, is something I'd be concerned about. So, I guess I don't have a problem looking into it a little bit more, but I sure want to get some answers to some of those questions.
Councilmember Gardner?
Just as a comment on what the long-term impact is, EQUAC did contact Laguna Beach, which has a ban, and said there's been virtually no problems. Everybody's just went along with it. There were, he gets maybe three calls a year on it, and that, at least in Laguna Beach, that hasn't been an issue.
Before we give direction to staff on this, I'd like to invite the public to come forward for our comments, and then we can synthesize those and come back with some specific direction for staff for moving forward. Please come to the podium. State your name, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, my name is Kandrelojak. I led that EQUAC study, consisting of Mike Pascal, Dr. Kimberly Jamerson, and myself, that led to this report that we're talking about tonight. And I just, most of it's been described in general, and I just touched on a couple of things. We received a lot of phone calls in various pieces of the city regarding concerns about this. So, that's what drove us to completing the report. They came primarily from Lido, Balboa Peninsula, Corona Del Mar, areas that are highly congested. So, I think the highly congested areas of the cities are the ones that we receive most information from. And that would make a lot of sense. So, if there are less congested areas that have less concerns, that would be understandable, I guess. Let me just put some meat on the bones. In 2000, the California Air Resources Board conducted a report, or completed a report, which is summarized, or at least partially summarized in our report to you. They concluded that leaf blowers are a significant environmental risk because of exhaust pollution, fugitive dust, and noise hazards. They recommended that municipalities look into some restrictions on their use. That was as far as they went at the California ARB. South Coast Air Quality Management District, I think in 2007, and since that time, has a program in place in which they allow gardeners or users to bring their polluting leaf blowers in, exchange them for a specific model of STIHL, which they think is less polluting and acceptable. And they will give them a rebate, and take their old leaf blowers in and destroy them. They've taken in 1,500 a year for the last two or three years. That's the limit of their budget and their activity in this area. But they recognize that that, that they pollute enough, so that they would take that step. Unfortunately, that step deals with gas emission problems, as opposed to noise and fugitive dust. So, they're, even though they deal with the gas emission pollution problems, they still don't deal with the two other significant issues, which are noise and dust. The one brand that they recommend, for which they'll exchange, we have included in the list in the report, and it is both of the ones in, that they recommend, or, no, both of the ones in that category. I don't know which one they recommend. But both of them exceed the noise limits at the property line in the current Newport Beach noise ordinances. So, even though they deal with air pollution, they don't deal with noise or fugitive dust. And the noise levels are the ones that they've selected exceed our noise ordinances. It's been mentioned that other cities have had mixed success, and it's true. Other cities, and I think Palo Alto is listed in the report, had a problem on enforcement. Laguna Beach took the opposite approach, and the actual wording in the ordinance is listed in the report. It basically is a total ban. The enforcement officer that I talked to said that in two years that he was on duty, and this is almost a year ago now, he's had two or three or four requests, and the public acceptance has been great, and the compliance has been very strong. So, he didn't think it was a significant problem at all. But that's Laguna Beach, and it's not true of every community that's tried it, as far as I can tell by talking to those. So, thank you for bringing it to the public. We're happy to have it out of EQUAC's hands and somewhere else, because we're, we've gone by as far as we can go with it, and we think that there ought to be some form of additional restrictions on it. But we understand the need to go the route we're going right now. So, thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Karen Tringali, and I'm here this afternoon representing the Corona Del Mar Residents Association. Over the last couple of years, the subject of leaf blower, air pollution, water pollution, and noise issues has been a prominent issue in a number of newsletters that we've published, a number of emails. We've actually done three different polls, one in 2005, one in 2006, and the recent, most recent one, after the EQUAC study in October of 2009. The 2009 poll that we did was our largest response rate yet. We had about an 18% response rate, which is statistically significant. And of that 18% that did respond, we had an 85% that overwhelmingly wanted either an outright ban, or some additional controls and restrictions. 55% wanted an outright ban. And I think from the residents' perspective, anything less than an outright ban really becomes an administrative nightmare and cost to the city. When you ban something, it's either on or off, and you don't have to go around measuring decibels, or looking to see if they have the newest STIHL model, which is a lower gas emission. So, I think our recommendation to the city would be to consider an outright ban, lowering, keeping the administrative cost of that ban lower. And then also, as Ken mentioned, you know, we're dealing not only with the noise issue, but certainly, we've had so many comments about the allergens in the air, and the fugitive dust, that's a great term, that comes out. And all of that debris that gets blown around the neighborhoods ends up in the gutters, and what goes in the gutters goes into our ocean. So, coming back to your council priorities, water quality being one, this would certainly dovetail nicely into that. So, that would be our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening. I'm a Corona Del Mar resident, and I participated in the Corona Del Mar resident survey. My comments are...
State your name, please, ma'am.
Pardon?
State your name, please.
Oh, Nancy Moran Sanchez. I live at 306 Narcissus. My feeling is that we can't wash the sidewalks. I have all hardscape in my garden. I have no flower beds. It's all hardscape with different textures, et cetera. So, we can't wash it. So, it has to be blown. So, I would be first to say, get rid of the leaf blowers. But I would, my garden would just be, have a predicament if we didn't have the leaf blower. But I would like to offer a suggestion, several years ago, of getting garden vacuums. Several years ago, I went to Sears &amp; Roebuck, and I picked up a garden vacuum. It's not as noisy as a leaf blower. It has a nice little campus bag. You go around, you pick everything up. It stays, it's contained in You go around, you pick everything up, it stays, it's contained in the canvas bag. If pebbles and rocks get sucked up, they stay in the canvas bag, so it does not hurt the user or the mechanics of the machine. And so, if we can't water, we have to have some sort of way, some way of cleaning things up. So I would vote to have you maybe investigate the garden vacuums. Thank you very much.
My name is Dr. Gail Reisman, and I live at 112 Via Hav on Lido. I can't add very much more, but I'm a gerontologist, and I also sit on the board of directors of Laika. And I want it noticed that there are some Laika residents here and two boards, board members. I would also like to say with regard to the gardeners, when I asked my gardener how he would feel about a ban, he was grateful. He said his eyes are constantly infected, so they have health issues as well as economic issues to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
WR Building, I live in the 300 block of East Balboa Boulevard. Last night, as a board member of Central Newport Beach Community Association, we brought this up to be a study session item, and there were screams. We have not been approached directly, and are aware of it. The thing that bothers me is gas-powered, electrically-operated leaf blowers, vacuums, and vultures. Okay, since they've relocated the flight path from John Wayne, I've got to sweep my steps down daily. I have an 80 by 30-foot lot. I have about 16 square feet of flower bed. Old concrete, your alleyway has asphalt. When they paved the alley in 75, I believe it was, there was a great adjustment. You can't sweep it with a push broom or a corn broom. The only way you can get it is vacuum a blower, blow it. Now, I have purchased a two-gallon electric vacuum blower, and it's a lot easier to blow than it is to suck it up and put it in a bag, to put it in the trash can. But I would support hours of operation. We're in a very transit area, probably the 25 to 30, there's only three of us that live there full-time. And I, being retired, I spent a long time cleaning up the alley and whatnot, trying. We've got buildings that protrude into the public right of way. And to get back with the exterior pipes coming up out of the ground and whatnot, you can't get a broom behind them. We've got to have something. We can't wash. We have one man now that washes three and four times a week. I wish somebody'd come by and stop him. My phone won't work. Thank you. But I think hours of operation and there's, the smaller lots, we're different than the point. We're rentals in our area. You've got people up here, larger lots and whatnot, there is a noise problem. So, got to satisfy everybody. I was kind of thankful to hear Sharon say exempting commercial area, the fact that I'm within the bid, Balboa bid, maybe even though I'm residential zone, maybe I'd be excluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Hunter Cook. I live at 227 Morning Canyon Road in Corona Del Mar. I'm a longtime resident of this city, and I've always been very impressed with the quality of life. I am absolutely opposed to leaf blowers. There is so much noise on my street certain times of the day that it's almost impossible to live. So I would like to make a suggestion for you folks, an alternative that you may wish to consider, I would hope that you would. We've run a test so far of allowing leaf blowers. I would suggest that you adopt a, an interim ordinance, let's say a year, banning the leaf blowers, and see how it comes out, see if there's any real effect on the people. My gardener has been using rakes for years now, and the additional cost, to me, is minimal. The time is insignificant, and it has not been a problem. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Jennifer Rogers. I live on Via Zurich on Lido Isle. I suffer terribly from allergies, and the pollen that is kicked up, especially during the warmer months when my home is open, sends me into terrible attacks. And putting that aside, I thought it was kind of interesting yesterday seeing a gardener with his leaf blower, wearing a mask. So you see that it does pose a health problem to them, too, as it was stated earlier. And I, for one, am still opposed to these leaf blowers. They're just killing me. So, I would appreciate you taking this into consideration. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to take it back to the council. I will say for my part, I think there is, based on the research that's been done by the Corona Del Mar Residents Association and by the emails we've received, sufficient public concern about this that it merits our consideration. I think the way to survey the public as recommended by EQUAC, though, is not with a poll, it's to send a letter to the homeowner associations and to the residents' associations in the city. Either they represent broad constituencies of people, as we've heard today, who can discuss this and formulate a recommendation, or in many cases, like in the gated communities, they are the employers of people who use the leaf blowers because they manage the landscaping. And I think it provides some informed feedback on this. The one thing I would want to hear back from the city is if we were to implement this, how would we, what would be the impacts, and would it encourage people to wash their walks down with water, which is something we just, you know, I think passed an ordinance, making it pretty much illegal. And so I want to make sure that there's adequate options, as the gentleman had previously discussed here, for people to deal with landscaping. But I agree with the comments that have been made, that it is a problem, and it's one that deserves further look by the council. And I think that's how I would want to proceed, but I'll open it up to my colleagues if there's any further recommendations or comments. Mr. Hen?
What I'd like to do is see if we can just narrow this down and make it as unobtrusive as possible here in terms of staff time and intensity. And so, I'd suggest that we consider, we limit it to residential, the consideration, that it be, we have them or we don't, as opposed to getting involved in a whole myriad of, you know, sub-restrictions and enforcement problems. And that, I think it is a good idea to see if in fact there is a public mandate in support of this. We've heard from the Corona Del Mar Resident Association, but I would like to hear from the four resident associations in my district, and perhaps other council members might, too. So I think it's a very good idea to send a balanced letter to the HOAs and ask them to weigh in on the subject. Some may choose not to, others may choose to not conduct a poll of members, some might, but that's up to them. So I think that's not very staff-intensive and labor-intensive to do that and to compile a response if the letter is sent out in a narrow, balanced way, and then ask staff to do one other thing, and that's contact a representative sample of maintenance organizations, maybe a couple large ones and a couple small ones, and see what response we get on that end. And then bring it back here one more time, and then we can decide, do we do anything about this or not? I think that narrows it down about as narrow as it can get.
Are there any other comments, or is there consensus on the suggestions that Mr. Hen has offered? Seeing no objections, do you have adequate direction?
I believe you do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I would ask, Dave, is that, does that idea make sense to you in terms of, because you're the person that really has to gauge, you know, the level of staff resources?
It does. We have a good email list of the HOAs. If we could potentially PDF the letter to them, give them a time certain to respond. Arguably, if you're talking about four to six gardeners or gardening companies to get pricing, that seems fairly reasonable. We could even do a little Survey Monkey kind of thing on our website, too, if we're interested. But I'm always optimistic, but it seems doable.
Thank you. Councilmember Dagle?
One additional thing we can perhaps add in there, I thought Ken's idea of maybe a next-generation technology and what that might mean if there's kind of a swap program that could result in something, you know, less intrusive on the environment.
The only problem with that is it only accounts for the, really for the noise. And as you've seen, one of the big issues we've had in the emails I've gotten is the dust, the people that are allergic. So certainly, we could, if we do not pass an ordinance banning them, we certainly want to start doing something to encourage rebate programs and everything. But I would, I don't know if we need to go there until we find out we're not going to do anything else.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is a presentation by the Association of Orange Coast Yacht Clubs.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is John Reynolds. I've met most of you, I think, and it's good to see you all again. I appreciate this opportunity to come here and tell you a little bit about AOCYC. And Chris Miller has been kind enough to be an enabler here to allow me to come give a short presentation. You can go ahead and hit the next one. First of all, what is it? It's an association of 15 member organizations, sailing organizations, yacht club here in Newport Beach and Dana Point. And we're all, all the organizations are also members of the Southern California Yachting Association, which is about 90 yacht clubs and sailing associations from Morro Bay all the way to San Diego. And the Association of Orange Coast Yacht Clubs is one of five harbor associations from Santa Barbara, Santa Monica Bay, which includes Marina Del Rey, San Pedro, ourselves, the Nell and Domas San Diego. And here are the members. A lot of you would probably recognize many of these. You can see many of the yacht clubs here in Newport Beach, as well as Dana Point, and other sailing associations, including the Scouts and Orange Coast College and UCI, Irvine, and so forth. Go ahead. The organization does basically two things fundamentally. One is, we put out annually a racing calendar, and one of the things I wanted to do this evening was to give you all a few of these that you can take a look at and peruse. One of the things about sailboat racing, there's a race almost every day, it seems like. And one of the, one of the tasks of the association is to try to go through and de-conflict these races so that everybody has a fair chance to get their race in. The second thing we do is to maintain 13 of these yellow spar buoy racing marks out in the harbor. And you can go ahead and hit that again. And here's an example one. This is a so-called K mark. It's down by Balboa Yacht Club. And all 13 of these look very similar. They're yellow spar buoys, they're not lighted, but they, they're pretty easy to see with the ambient light around here. Many of the yacht clubs also use, in addition to the spar buoys, other navigation aids, such as the eight, the six, and the eight nav aid to service marks for their races. And we can go ahead and look at the last part. This probably doesn't show up too well, but you can see where these 13 marks are located around Newport Harbor. The Z mark are all the way up into the Turning Basin at Lido, all the way down to the K mark, and they even use the entrance buoy as the so-called J mark sometimes. And let me just say that I have packages of a few of these calendars for each of you. And in addition, the calendar that we put together is in turn integrated into a Southern California Yachting Association calendar, which includes the races for all the harbor associations. And one of these is included in your package as well. That's all I wanted to say. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer one or two.
I was just, as someone who's lived here almost all of life, but never had anything to do with boats, we were surfers and not boaters. And I was astounded to find out, I was talking to people, and it was like, would you like to go out on a boat race? I said, "Oh, yeah." When will there be one? You do have them almost every day.
Well, in the summertime, there are these summer series inside the harbor, and that's where these marks get used.
Yeah, and I was just amazed at how active the boaters are and-
It really is.
-why we need to do our dredging. We continue to-
Yeah, please. Yeah, the association is about 45 years old. It was started in about 1965, and so it's been around all these years. So let me, I'll tell you what, let me get these on this side, you get those side.
Thank you for that fine presentation. Newport Beach is home to more than 9,000 pleasure boats, as I understand it, and it really helps define our community. Councilmember Hen?
Yeah. I just had, I just had one further comment. Chris, I'm assuming that you've had the opportunity to apprise John of the proposed marina restrictions that we have discussed at the coast and bay. And the Association of Yacht Clubs may have a point of view about those, too.
Right, right. In fact, we're going to be talking about that at tomorrow night's Harbor Commission meeting as well, and John's going to be giving the same presentation tomorrow night to our Harbor Commission, and we'll be talking about the coastal marina permit.
Oh, yes. Familiar with that one. Thank you.
I have one.
We have a question.
I have one question. I know that about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, we had some, there was some friction between a lot of yacht racers and the Harbor Patrol. I think that's been cleared up, but have you heard anything one way or the other on that?
I have not. And we did try to participate to the extent that we could, offer opinions and help and mediate, if that was the right word. But I think the, for the most part, it's just kind of gone away for a while. We've had some turnover in the Harbor Master's office, and I have, we have not heard of any reports recently of-
That's great. Great news to hear. I just wanted to make sure that I hadn't overlooked something.
Well, and the Harbor Commission was very helpful, I think, also in those discussions.
Thank you very much. Does any member of the public wish to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Seeing none, we're adjourned.